I miss. So I might send them down first thing in the morning and put it on.
Okay, we will call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order on Monday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, six o'clock P M. We get a roll call, please.
Brian Hanson.
Here.
Barb Mittman.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skaggs.
Here.
Andy Eric.
Andy did notify us she would not be in attendance. Can we move forward to approval of the agenda?
Okay, approved, second.
And Jason, any discussion on the agenda? Being none, council, please vote. Agenda is approved, takes us to the first public hearing. There are three tonight. The first one is proposal to consider the vacation of city property. And so we will go ahead and open that public hearing. Aaron, did we receive any written or oral comment?
Yeah.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak in that public hearing for the vacation of city property? Being none, we'll close the public hearing, which moves us to resolution number twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Resolution to vacate and convey an alleyway adjoining block twelve and Burris addition.
Move to approve, second.
Steve, Dane, any discussion? Being none, council, please vote. That is approved. Um, that takes us to the second public hearing for golf and ATV, UTV ordinance. We will go ahead and head and open that public hearing. Aaron, did you receive any written or oral comment? Is anyone here to speak in the public hearing regarding the golf and ATV, UTV ordinance? You are, you can head on over to the podium there and state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, Doug Anderson, two four zero seven nine six hundred seventy. Here in Bay Grove. Glad to see all the effort that you guys have put into it. Others love support, but probably not a lot of support. That was really all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Hey, seeing no further comment, we'll close the public hearing, move to ordinance number ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. An ordinance regarding proposed modification, chapter seventy-seven pertaining to golf carts, first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane.
Barb.
Discussion?
I still don't know what we're gonna do with people that live in like Indian Ridge with the golf carts. I know maybe nobody's complained. I don't know if anybody's called or anything, but they're kind of on island. You know, so are anybody that lives in Flummert South Highway. They're kind of on an island too. So are we excluding? And I know we probably, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong. We probably can't do anything about it really because of the state law.
Yeah, it would take legislation change in order to get that primary roadway extension language revised.
So if when with the flyovers done, is that an extension? S fourteen?
I would believe so.
Says just Lincoln Way, Eighteenth Street and Nineteenth Street.
It's the primary roadway extensions are all of those that essentially cross out of city boundaries. So.
So Maple would still be excluded, wouldn't it? No, it isn't.
And I don't.
Laid out here.
Right. And I don't know that that's the intent. You know, that was the intent of the golf cart legislation originally, but it's been on the books for so long that it it maybe just needs to be revisited, but that's not something the city can revise.
Right, right. Okay. Well, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Anything else about golf carts?
Is it possible to forego the second, third reading so people actually had a chance to use it this year?
Yeah.
Is there any reason we couldn't do that, I guess?
Aaron, I guess, but I think you have to.
If we wait another month, it's gonna start getting a little chilly.
But we have to pass first reading and then you can make a motion. We've we bypassed second, third readings.
And whether you expect there to. Cause we've done in the past for non-controversial items that we don't expect additional feedback. So it's whether you think that there would be members of the public interested in providing feedback, because as we know, often they may not be paying attention until the first reading is done.
We could, Steve, pass us and wait. It'd only be two weeks and we could waive the third reading at that point if like Brett is right, that maybe nobody notices till. I mean, there's people like Doug in that group that we're in and like our Facebook group that people follow it, but I don't know the people in the city. A lot of them probably have followed it. I don't know if that makes sense. Maybe.
I would say it's unusual for you guys to waive second and third. You you absolutely can, but it would be unusual to do that.
About third, then, is that?
We've seen that more fre- more frequently.
Yeah, I'm okay with that if we.
It's only two more weeks.
Yeah.
Any other discussion about the first reading? Being none, council, please vote. That has passed. Um, takes us to uh, the next one, which is ordinance number ten thirty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance regarding proposed new chapter seventy-eight pertaining to ATV, UTV, first reading.
Move to approve.
Second, Jason, Brian, discussion on that one?
I think we need some editorial, a couple editorial things in this in this one, if we can do that without stopping everything. Um, if you look at seventy-eight point zero three, number two, it's there's there's just a clause in there that doesn't make any sense. It says ATVs, UTVs, and operators of ATVs, UTVs are considered vehicles. That and operators of ATVs, UTVs could be deleted because of point one. We already discussed. And the same clause is also in seventy-eight point zero eight with for hours and dates. So i- in essence, the way it reads it, operators are being considered vehicles. And that's not our intent. Fine. And then and I just, I'm guessing that there was some cutting and pasting way back, a really initial draft and um, so number one, seventy-eight oh three, number one, takes care of the operators. Valid driver's license, at least eighteen. And then number two speaks to the actual vehicles themselves. And as number three is kind of puts those all together with the Iowa code. Um, seventy-eight point zero eight is the hours and the dates. And again, there isn't any reason to include operators because it's the vehicles that are being operated. The operators are not considered vehicles.
Yep, that makes sense.
We do that with hours.
Not material.
Oh, yeah, I did that. Sorry.
And so to incorporate Barb's suggestion, do you need a motion to amend, or can that just be done in between?
We'll just revise it. Yep.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? And we have our seasoned proofreader over there.
Just it's like, I was reading, I was like, I was tired last night, but it's like, I didn't know any sense.
Believe how many times Jordan and I have gone through that.
When I, yeah, when I, when I said, when I said, when I said it, I was like, I don't want to stop this. I really don't want to stop this, but operators are not vehicles.
True statement. Thank you for catching up.
Thanks.
Hey, other discussion? Being none, council, please vote.
We want to do the same thing with this one and wait two weeks to possibly waive a third reading.
Yeah, the first reading is approved and then, yeah, we can, at the next meeting, you can determine if you expect further comment for a third or not.
Talked about it a lot, I just.
Okay. The next public hearing is proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement. So we will open that public hearing. Aaron, did you receive any written or oral comment?
No.
Is there anyone here to speak in the public hearing regarding the sewer revenue loan? Being none, we'll close the public hearing, move to resolution number thirty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Resolution authorizing and approving a loan and disbursement agreement, combining loan and disbursement agreements and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of twenty million eight hundred thirty-eight thousand sewer revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-two A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason and Steve. Discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. Approved, which takes us to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration?
Move to approve.
Second.
Ain't Barb discussion? Being none, council, please vote. And that is approved, which takes us to the public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. We do have three proclamations to start off the public forum this evening. The first is for the crop hunger walk. Um, it's proclaiming October second, twenty twenty-two is crop walk day. I know Barb has been involved in some of those discussions, so maybe if you want to update folks on what's going on and give them some more background.
Right, um, Story County is hosted. There's been some sort of crop walk in Story County for more than fifty years. And so we were trying to really, um, bring this back before the people because it's a really easy way, um, walking five K on a Sunday afternoon or coming and eating, walking tacos at the pavilion an hour ahead of the the walk. So come for lunch at noon. Take off at one o'clock, walk, enjoy, get some of your friends to support you. It's a really easy way to support hunger locally, but also globally. And with everything that's in the news and with war and and weather and famine, it's just a really easy way to it really seriously impact the three to six feet around you. In an amazing way. So I encourage you to check online. Uh, Pastor Kathleen from Memorial Lutheran Church has been chairing that group. They've been really active. Um, and if you're not available on October second, um, the following week, um, the following Sunday afternoon, uh, another story county walk is happening, um, at in in Ames. And again, same opportunity to really, um, impact local and global hunger.
Thanks, Barb. And that's signed and now official, so we'll have Marla's put it out too. Um, the next one is for library card signup month, which is going to be September twenty twenty-two. And obviously we have an incredible library with all sorts of resources. So we're encouraging everyone to sign up for their own library card or renew their expiring one like I need to do. It's a good reminder here. So that one I will sign. And then the last one is National Clean Energy Week, um, which is September twenty-sixth through thirtieth, really talking about the clean energy sector. Obviously, we have multiple employers in our community that, um, are big in clean energy and leaders there. So those are the three proclamations. With that, we'll continue in the public forum. Is there anyone here to speak in the public forum?
Oh.
Hey.
I did notice a young man sitting out here. He had asked me uh, last Friday about where the the B ordinance is, and I thought it was gonna hit this agenda, but I don't see it on here, so.
Was supposed.
It's in the, it's in the consent.
Oh, is it?
The public hearing set was in the consent.
Sorry, I missed it.
Yes.
All right.
For the next is the in that.
Oh, yeah, there it is. I'm sorry.
It's for the next meeting, right? We'll see that before us. Great.
Next meeting. Weeks ahead. Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay. Yeah. So the council tonight set the public hearing for the B ordinance, which will be at that. We'll have a public hearing at the next meeting.
We're getting close.
Okay, anything else for public forum?
Guys, you get to see what the latest version of that is.
Yeah, we can.
The the proposed ordinance.
Hmm, it's part of the packet.
Yeah.
I can.
On the website. Yeah, should be.
If not, just.
Yeah. So it would be in the council packet for tonight. You'd be able to hold a full packet, which has the draft in there that you can review.
It'll be towards the beginning of the meeting, just like the public hearings tonight.
Thank you.
And seeing nothing else for public forum, we can close the public forum and move to old business. We have ordinance ten twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Nevada, Iowa by rezoning the property at six forty South Nineteenth Street Outlet A from A R Agricultural Residential Reserve District to R four Multiple Family Dwelling District, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Barb, any discussion? Being none, council, please vote. Okay. And that is approved, takes us to old business B, ordinance number ten thirty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Non- amending provisions pertaining to sewer use charges, chapter ninety-nine, second reading. Moved. Brian, Steve, discussion? None, council, please vote. Hey, that is approved. Um, takes us to C, approved pay request number fifteen for wastewater treatment facility improvements, phase two from Williams Brothers Construction, incorporating the amount of two million four hundred nineteen thousand, hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-four cents.
Move to approve.
Second, Jason and Steve, discussion? None, council, please vote. Approved. Um, takes us to D, approved pay request number seven for wastewater treatment facility improvements, phase three from Boomerang Corporation, the amount of forty thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Dane, Barb, discussion? None, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to E, approved pay request number one for wastewater treatment facility improvements, phase four from Monttract Construction LLC, the amount of nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Move to approve.
Barb.
Bargain.
Jason? Any discussion on that? Being none, council, please vote. Okay, that is approved. Um, which takes us to F, approved pay request number three for the Field House from HPC LLC, the amount of one hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian, Dane, any discussion? None, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to G, CDBG, micro enterprise funding for give up a loan agreements. Can they do them all at once? We have to do them motion by motion?
By motion.
Okay, so we'll do motion by motion. So resolution number thirty-four, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Felton Properties.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane, Steve, discussion? None, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to two, resolution number thirty-five, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Great Plains Millwork.
Move to approve.
Bargain.
Steve, Jason, discussion? Council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to three, resolution number thirty-six, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Sweet Dreams Mattress.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Barb, discussion? None, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to number four, resolution number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Wild Roots Salon.
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian and Dane, discussion? None, council, please vote. Approved. Takes us to number five, resolution number thirty-eight, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Meyer Chiropractic.
Move to approve, second.
Dane, Barb, any discussion? None, council, please vote. Approved. Congratulations, Jeremy. Thanks for working on your project. Takes us to number six, resolution number thirty-nine, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, for this state photography.
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian? Being no discussion, council, please vote. Hey, that is approved, takes us to new business. Resolution number forty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, a resolution to approve minor subdivision, Rosk subdivision.
Move to approve.
Bargain.
Brian and Jason? Any discussion? Being none, council, please vote. And that is approved. Um, which takes us to B, ordinance number ten thirty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter sixty-nine, no parking, funeral parking.
Move to approve, second.
Steve, Dane, discussion? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. Okay, that is approved. Takes us to C, neighborhood improvement incentive program application from Flummer felt home, Sunridge Estates, and the amount of twenty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Dane, Barb?
I weigh the cap on this.
That was, uh, that was for eight properties.
Oh, this is for eight? Okay.
And yes, we do have a cap. It's ten thousand dollars.
Okay, here. Yep, yep, yep. Okay. I didn't, I missed that part. It was eight evidently. So, okay.
Okay, seeing no other disturbance, council, please vote. That is approved. Which takes us to report, starting with our city administrator.
All right, well, I had a lot of meetings this last, over the last few weeks, probably felt like more since we had three weeks in between a council meeting, but um, typical several monthly meetings that we had. I also set up the strategic planning date, so keep October fourteenth, twelve thirty to four o'clock open for your calendars. Um, and then the other thing that we were able to get accomplished was I volunteered with Forever Green Lane. We're able to get the retaining wall rebuilt after it fell down during Duracho. So um, that was a nice, nice thing that we were able to accomplish. Just need to do a little more touch-ups. And I think in the next few years, we're planning on doing that around the whole the whole, um, property. So, um, other than that, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but that's all I have.
And moving on from my report, I wanted to give a shout out to Lincoln Highway Days, another successful year and good celebration for the community. Um, also, I know the the other main thing was did the entrance exam for the auditor. So one of the elected officials has to do that. So we did the exit exam, I think, what, week or two before we did the entrance exam for the new audit. Um, but that has been done and that, I know staff's been working with them and I think, are they out of here now?
Yep, they are.
There you go.
Last Friday was the last day.
So I think we'll get this this one faster than we got the last one. Um, do you have any questions for me? Council reports.
I'm not really report, but I wanted to kind of put it in everyone's ear about. I know at some point the West Water Tower will come into maintenance again. I just noticed it's the Nevada's faded really, really bad. I would like to, so I want everyone's opinion. I think I think we should look into our new N on it when it's time for the repainting. So I don't know where we're at, what we need to do.
I believe we have one year left on the contract. Uh, we actually we just signed a new contract, but every other year they're supposed to be doing the touch-ups and paints. I believe that. Uh, I need to talk with Sean Ludwig, but I believe what we can do is we can request and we may have to pay a little bit extra for the updated logo, but, um, everything should be within the contract.
I think that'd be pretty cool with the paw on the south tower, if we get our new emblem on the
Yeah.
on the west tower.
Even the south tower. That one's been painted more recently.
Yeah.
When that one's due, we'd need to update the branding there too.
Yeah. So I just when I was driving in tonight on the way to meeting, ah, before I forget about it, up, let it help someone else help remind me to remind. So anyway, I just had that.
Do another subcommittee and look at paint designs like the first one.
Right there. So.
We had a Lincoln Highway Day committee meeting Friday. Things were pretty good for the whole overall for the Lincoln Highway Days Festival. Uh, Friday was a little more attended this year than last year, so we keep doing that. I think, uh, people will realize that we are doing more and more down there. Uh, we've been coming up with more and more ideas of what we can do. We're gonna try to bring a few more people into the committee and help out and do more things.
So plug for anybody listening, if you want to be involved in Lincoln Highway Days, need some more volunteers.
Reach out.
Please sign up.
Yes.
Make it better.
Yes, Steve and I would appreciate it very much.
We're getting tired.
We're tired. No.
Any other council reports?
Uh, Camelot Theater Foundation had a successful Karate Kid movie event. It was great to see people back at the theater watching a movie. A lot of fun, a lot of kids there. Some of them fell asleep. But, uh, the, uh, the group is starting a campaign to save the windows. Uh, you may have seen with all the work on the front, uh, the windows are also falling apart. Um, so they're working on a fundraiser for that as well as having an event on October first, a local band, uh, to raise some money for that. So everybody come.
Seeing no other reports, we'll go back to staff, go to Ray. Well, another congratulations and thank you for the event yesterday. The photos looked fantastic. So I know you got some news from that too. Important day to recognize. Ryan? Sergeant?
Uh, just a couple of quick updates. Um, Wayne's or Officer Vanderhart is in a couple of weeks in his field training, doing good. It's nice being full staff, so we're doing more trainings. Um, we'll be doing precision driving training next month. We did our annual Caesar update. Um, and with football starting, we'll be out at ISU lots. We'll have officers there periodically doing working for them, um, just like every other year. Um, and then I'll be starting Staff and Command next week, so look forward to that opportunity. That's all I have. Guys, have any questions for me?
Aaron?
I'm good, trucking along without Karen, so.
You're doing a good job.
It's been good. It's been good.
Aaron, I saw library Aaron earlier, but she she didn't stick around, I don't think. Okay, make sure I wasn't missing her back there. Larry?
Uh, you have my report on projects we're working on. And it covers both August or July and August, so kind of fairly lengthy report. And any questions if you might have them?
Larry, Aaron? Counsel, anything else before we move to closed session? Or never mind, there's a discussion appropriate follow-up. So it's do we do closed session first?
Um, no, ten was on there to see if the property owner was here.
Okay.
There's some input before we went to closed session.
Okay.
So.
We don't need to do anything with that one.
We will not need that.
Okay. So with that, there's closed session pursuant to authority found in Iowa code twenty-one point five one C to discuss strategy with counsel and matters that are presently litigation or where litigation is imminent, where disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the government body in that litigation.
I'm moved to go into closed session.
Brian and Jason? So council, please vote.
You don't have any lights?
Okay. They. They, they hit their buttons, are you gonna do a voice?
I'll just do a voice vote.
Okay.
Uh, Brian Hanson.
Hi.
Barb Mittman.
Hi.
Dane Nielsen.
Hi.
Jason Sampson.
Hi.
Steve Skaggs.
Hi.
Okay, so that'll put us in closed session, we'll give folks a minute or so to clear out, and then we'll resume.